Hey, good evening. Thank you so much for joining us tonight for our Daniel Bible Study Part Three. We are super excited to have you with us today. And actually, today is a very, very special day for my bride Stacy and I. Thirty years ago, on this very night, what was it, a Friday? A Friday night or Saturday? On a Friday or Saturday night, thirty years ago at about 7:00 PM, we said I do. And it was the best decision I ever made in my whole life. And so, I would like to just celebrate the beauty of my bride who's saying, "Don't call me up in front of the camera, but happy anniversary. I love you very much." And so, thank you all so much for celebrating with us. We did go out on a fancy hot date last night anticipating that we would be sharing this night with you tonight. So, hey, welcome to Daniel Part Three. If you are joining us for the first time, or if you're new to our broadcast, go to WhitestoneChurchTX.com. WhitestoneChurchTX.com. You can go to the video drop-down bar, find Daniel Bible Study. You can download the PDF notes. We're in Session Three, or Part Three, tonight. If you'd like to go to the Contact Us, give us your email, fill out the form, give us your email. We'll be happy to email you. My dad faithfully sends those out every Tuesday afternoon, straight to your inbox. So, either way, we want you to grab our notes. Tonight's notes are a lot. We've got eleven pages of notes. We won't reference every bit of them, of course, so they're there for your due diligence to go through on your own time as we study through the Book of Daniel. Many of the notes that we're gonna follow from here on out are from Chuck Missler, Koinia House. Chuck Missler, who's gone to be with the Lord, back in 2004, published notes on the Book of Daniel. They are spectacular. So, if you want to do a very, very in-depth study on the Book of Daniel, it's probably about a fourteen-hour in-depth study. You can download his information from khouse.org, or just Google Chuck Missler. Missile with an R on the end. And so, a lot of your notes, you'll see some references there, and just wanted to give you some more information. So, tonight, we're gonna dive into the Book of Daniel, Old Testament book written in around 500 B.C., so about 560 B.C., give or take, five hundred and sixty years before the birth of Christ. So, we are five to six hundred years before what we would call Bible times, or New Testament times. So, we find ourselves in the city or the empire of the Babylonians. And so, let's pray. We'll dive into Daniel, Chapter Two, and let's get started. Father God, we love you, and God, we thank you for this time. We ask for your blessing. We ask for wisdom, discernment, peace, favor, God. We lift up to those, our friends and families, who have COVID, God. We pray that you would heal bodies, heal minds, heal jobs, relationships, finances, God, that you would show yourself strong this time of year. And God, that you would invade our hearts, rattle us, God, to the core, shake off of us, prune the tree, God, shake off of us the dead fruit. God, bring out the good stuff. God, bring out the best wine for the latter days, the latter days. God, bring out the best of the best. And I ask for your blessing on us and everybody listening, in the mighty name of Jesus. And everybody said, "Amen." Amen. Grab your Bible. Open up to Daniel, Chapter Two. I have printed every word of Chapter Two in your notes, so if you don't have your Bible, you can just look at your notes. But grab something, write it down. If you have any questions, post it in the comment bar there on YouTube, or you can email me, or email us through the Contact Us. We'll do our best to answer some of your questions. Some of your questions are really good. Some of them I have to put, "I don't know. I have no idea," but keep them coming. If I can't give you the answer, I'll try to find it for you, and if I don't know, I'll just tell you, "I don't know." So, here we are, the Book of Daniel, a look at historical and modern-day Babylon. Chapters two through seven. Here's an interesting thing. Chapter one, and the first three verses of Chapter Two are written in Hebrew. Chapters two through seven are the only books, or the only chapters in the Bible written in Aramaic. So, your Old Testament was written in Hebrew, your New Testament was written in Greek. But for these seven chapters, we find some unique characteristics about the Book of Daniel. And the Book of Daniel is one of the most authenticated books in the Bible. From secular scholars, biblical scholars, the Book of Daniel has passed the scrutiny of the critics. But interesting that these five chapters or so were written in Aramaic. You'll also find in Chapter Four of the Book of Daniel, it was written by Gentile King. And so, it's four or five, I forgot exactly right now. Yeah, Chapter Four was written by Nebuchadnezzar himself. So, it's interesting to see how God's taken even this Gentile language of the day and orchestrated it in Holy Scripture. Chapters two through seven are written in Aramaic. It's focused on the Chaldean or the Gentile population. So, most likely, Daniel wanted his message to be understood by his counterpart, by his peers. He wanted the Gentile people to be able to read the Word of God. Chapter Four, written by Gentile King. Chapters eight through twelve focus on Israel and end times. When we talk about historical Babylon, it's also a prophetic look to the end of times, the day and age that we live in now. You can read some of the historical facts I put there. Chapter seven through twelve, we're gonna get into the vision chapters, and these are gonna be very necessary to then understand the Book of Revelation and end-time prophecy. Jesus quotes, down at the bottom of page one. Jesus quotes Daniel three times in the Gospels, and one of the best validations to the Old Testament. When you hear somebody say, "Well, we can't really trust the Old Testament. It's got a lot of errors in it. It's got a lot of, you know, man's input." All of that is not true, and here's one of the biggest reasons why. When Jesus quoted from a book, he never would have quoted or made a statement from a false record, or a false recording of history or biblical information. So, when Jesus quotes from the Book of Daniel three times, he's validating the Book of Daniel, saying, "Hey, you can trust the Book of Daniel, 'cause the Son of God says so." So, when we say Jesus validates it, that's what we mean. He quotes from it. He quotes from almost all of the Old Testament books, but the ones that we know of in the Red Letters, if you will, it's a great validation. Interesting fact, Joseph, the boy who was sold by his brothers into slavery in Egypt, who wore the coat of many colors, went from the prison to the palace. He and Daniel are both captives in a foreign land. They're both captive under the world dictator. They're both captive under the most powerful person in the world in their time that is anti-Jewish God, anti-Israel, pagan, demonic, occultic. So, we have Pharaoh in Egypt, we have Nebuchadnezzar in Babylon. Both of these men rise to extremely high positions in a pagan government, and they do not sin. Daniel and Joseph are the only two prophets, the only two people mentioned in the Bible, other than Jesus himself, that we have books named after stories told, that nothing negative or bad is recorded. For example, David who kills Goliath. We also realize, wow, he cheats with another man's wife, and murders Uriah, but then he repents, and God restores him. So, we see the good, the bad, the ugly about David. We see that with Samson. We see that with Noah. We see that with all these other men mentioned in Scripture, with the exception of Joseph and Daniel. As a teenager, he is deported from his homeland into a foreign land, but he doesn't just rise to power under one king and one foreign dictator. He rises to power under two, and we'll see that as we travel through the Book of Daniel. Daniel was raised, Daniel, Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego. If you've ever heard of the king Josiah. Josiah was the youngest king to take the throne in Israel at the age of eight. And an interesting thing about Josiah was Josiah, his predecessors, the kings before him, had hidden the Word of God from the people, and they chased pagan deities and did a lot of corrupt stuff. Josiah comes in at the bright age of eight, and in his teenage years says, "Hey, where's all the ancient scrolls with all the Torah on it? Where's our Bible? Where's our information? Why aren't we reading this? Why aren't we sharing this?" So, Josiah reestablishes the Word of God to the Hebrew nation, to the Israelites. Well, Daniel, Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego are all boys under the reign of the king Josiah. So, interesting about it is when Josiah brings the scrolls out, and he brings back the Word of God to the nation, I don't know how old he was, but I wanna remember something saying that he was probably in his mid-teenage years. So, like anybody that's in a status of fame and popularity and power, somebody that climbed the mountain that we talked about last time. Well, Josiah had climbed the governmental mountain, and he reestablishes the Word of God. Well, underneath him, at maybe the age of eleven, twelve, thirteen, you've got four Hebrew boys underneath the power of Josiah, who we'll just say he was sixteen at the time that he brings back the Word of God. You have a sixteen-year-old king ruling the world, or ruling the Jewish nation, saying, "Bring back the Word of God." And he's influencing four boys in his kingdom, along with all the rest of them, but he influences four boys that go on to not bow under a foreign deity or pagan dictator years later. So, the importance of climbing the mountain, like we talked about last week, this is relevant when we look at Daniel, because he was raised under the tutelage or the kingship of Josiah, which had great impact on him as a young man. Second page of your notes, there's a lot of notes. We won't read through all of them. But I wanna focus in on the top, because even myself, I forget Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego's proper names. But let's look at these four Hebrew boys. So, let's just imagine, we're all American, we're all in our early, late, pre- we're all in, you know, somewhere between the age of ten and thirteen or fourteen, and our nation is invaded by a foreign power. Let's just say China comes in and invades America, and takes us captive, takes the best and the brightest, and the best-looking. So, obviously, my wife would have been in that category. This pagan king took the best of the best out of the land, takes them back to China. We can no longer speak American. We don't have food. We don't have our culture, our religion, anything. We're stripped of that, and now we serve in a foreign land to a foreign king, never, never to return home. But yet, we don't bow down. That's power. Daniel's one of those men. Daniel's Hebrew name is Daniel. Daniel's Babylonian name, when we read through the Book of Daniel, is Belshazzar. So, we'll see some very subtle changes in these different names. But Belshazzar would have been Daniel's Babylonian name. Now, look at the first three words of his, the first three letters, B-E-L. This is Baal, or Belle, rebel, with the word we get rebel or rubble. This is pagan Luciferian worship, right here. Belshazzar, the word Daniel meant, "God is my judge." So, there's a popular saying, you know, "Only God is my judge," or, you know, "Only God can judge me." Well, Daniel's name means, "God is my judge." But his pagan name, when he was shipped off to Babylon, he was then no longer allowed to be called Daniel, but now they would recognize him as Belshazzar, prince of Baal, prince of Beelzebub. You'll see these first few words, and all these names, you'll recognize them in all these foreign pagan deity names. So, now Daniel can no longer be called Daniel. He's called Belshazzar. His name in Babylonian means prince of Baal, or prince of the son of Lucifer himself. Hananiah is who we know as Shadrach. So, when we say Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego, Shadrach's real Hebrew name is Hananiah. Hananiah's name means beloved of the Lord. His Babylonian name is Shadrach, which means illumined by the sun god. Now, if you remember, in Pharaoh's day, Pharaoh would have worshipped, or Egyptians would have worshipped Ra, the sun god. The Babylonians worshiped the sun god too. They just have a different name, or a different word for him, and that is, and a derivative of that would be Shadrach, who's illumined, or his wisdom comes from the sun god, not Jehovah God. Meshach is probably the easiest one. The most closest to his Babylonian name is Meshach. Meshach in Hebrew is, "Who is as God." Meshach means in Babylonian, "Who is likened unto the moon god." Now, in Babylonian, or pagan culture, there is worship of the moon. There's worship of the sun. Now, Meshach is likened to the moon god. Azariah is who we know as Abednego. Azariah is, "The Lord is my helper," is his Hebrew name. Abednego means servant of Nego, a shining fire. Now, the word Nego in Chaldean translates to Lucifer. The Nogia is the same as Nego. So, basically, Abednego means servant of the devil, servant of Lucifer. So, in Babylon, this wasn't just another religious culture. This is a pagan occultic culture, and we'll see that much more relevant as we go through the chapters. So, there's some other information about the timeline. We're at about six hundred years before the birth of Christ, and it kinda goes down. Daniel's career is summed up down at the bottom. You can read that for yourself. It's a great summary that Chuck Missler puts together on that. So, let's dive into Chapter Two, verse, the first twenty verses. I'm gonna just read the first three right now, and then I'll let you read the rest of them, and I'll summarize. And we'll pick up into the dreams and the visions that Daniel interprets for King Nebuchadnezzar. But here we go, Daniel, Chapter Two, verse one. "Now, in the second year of Nebuchadnezzar's reign, Nebuchadnezzar had dreams, and his spirit was so troubled that his sleep left him. Then the king gave the command to call the magicians." So, I want you to take your pen, and I want you to underline magicians, astrologers, sorcerers, and the Chaldeans. Now, the word Chaldeans there isn't necessarily referencing a people group like the Americans, or the Chinese, or the Germans. The Chaldeans here is a word for pagan occultic magicians, sorcerers, necromancers, the occult wise men, as Daniel would later call them. So, he calls to him, King Nebuchadnezzar says, "Hey, bring me my magicians, astrologers, sorcerers, Chaldeans. They need to tell me about my dream." So, all of these different pagan occult practitioners came and stood before the king, and the king says this, "I had a dream, and my spirit is anxious to know the dream." Verse four, "O king, live forever. Tell us the dream, and we will give you the interpretation." Now, this is what we see all through Scripture. A king or a person has a dream. God sends somebody else to interpret it. That king or that person that had the dream tells the people their dream, and then they bring back the interpretation. King Nebuchadnezzar is fixing to throw a wrench in these wise men, these occultic practitioners, diviners. He's fixing to throw a wrench into their mind, 'cause he's gonna tell them this. And this is what the first nineteen verses sum up in a couple of different ways. King Nebuchadnezzar brings all of his people to him, and he says, "Hey, listen, I had a dream. I'm anxious. I can't sleep. I wanna know the interpretation of the dream." So, all of the soothsayers, pagan deity worshippers, all these people say, "Hey, O king, tell us the dream, and we'll tell you the interpretation." Now, King Nebuchadnezzar, because these soothsayers, magicians, necromancers, all these wise men of Babylon, because he conquered Babylon, he doesn't trust them yet. He's inherited them. So, he's not an idiot. He says, "Hey, wait, 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 wait. I'm not gonna play your game. If you're so powerful in your occult worship, then your God, your power, you should be able to tell me my dream." So, "Hey, listen, I had a dream. I'm really concerned about it. Tell me your dream." "No, if you're powerful, you tell me my dream and its interpretation." So, all these wise men, all these occultic practitioners, they say, "Hey, tell us your dream. Please tell us your dream. We'll give you the interpretation." He says, "No, in fact, if within twenty-four hours, if you don't tell me my dream and the interpretation, I'm gonna kill you." Now, this wrench has never been thrown in the machine, if you will, of these men's lives. They are used to the king or the important person telling them the dream, and then giving them an interpretation that they want to hear. Now, it's gonna take somebody very special to tell them the dream and the interpretation. In your notes, here's a couple of notes that I want us to pick up on in the first nineteen verses or so. From Nebuchadnezzar's perspective, he was young and successful for conquering the unknown world, but this staff of magicians, he inherited, so he doesn't trust them. He doesn't trust that they're still not loyal to the previous king or empire. Chaldeans, I've already given you, that's the name given of this different group of people. Daniel calls them wise men. Now, when we read the word wise men, let's not automatically think, "These are good guys." Let's not put them in the same category as the wise men that visit Jesus, although later, we will understand that the wise men that visit Jesus do come out of this culture, but they get saved, and they start to use their God-given supernatural gifts for His glory to be at the birth of the Messiah, not for occultic practice. So, the word wise men is what Daniel will call these men, but don't be fooled. They are digging into occultic power, the dark side, if you will. So, the first nineteen verses is talking about Nebuchadnezzar wanting them to tell him his dream. Long story short, the servant of all of these wise men comes back to Daniel, and Daniel says, "Hey, why are you so sad?" He goes, "Man, we're all gonna die." Daniel's like, "What's gonna happen? Why are we all gonna die?" And he goes, "Because if we don't tell the king his dream, he's gonna kill us." And Daniel was as perplexed as they were. But Daniel says, "Go tell the dream that the true God of heaven," not the gods of heaven, but the true God of heaven, will not only tell him his dream, but he'll also interpret the dream. So, that's where we're really gonna focus in on Daniel, Chapter Two, tonight. So, go down to verse twenty-four, and let's dig in. "Therefore, Daniel went to Eriak, whom the king had appointed to destroy the wise men of Babylon. He went and said, 'Do not destroy the wise men of Babylon. Take me, Daniel, before the king, and I will tell the king the interpretation.' So then Eriak quickly brought Daniel before the king and said, 'I have found a man of the captives of Judah, who will make known to you the interpretation of your dream.' The king answered and said to Daniel, whose name was Belshazzar, 'Are you able to make known to me the dream which I have seen and its interpretation?' Hey, boy, don't waste my time. You gonna be able to tell me my dream and the interpretation?" Now, Daniel, being taken captive, going through all this crazy torture and heartache, could have turned his back on God, could have made himself out to look powerful and have this great wisdom and insight, but he says this. "Daniel answered in the presence of the king. The secret which the king has demanded, the wise men, astrologers, magicians, soothsayers, cannot declare to the king. But there is a God in heaven who reveals secrets, and he has made known to King Nebuchadnezzar what will be in the latter days." So, verse twenty-eight, I want you to underline latter days. Now, when it's talking about latter days, it means anything after this dream until today. So, we're fixing to see this dream given to a king today, being 2020, and then being 600 B.C., 2,600 years ago. This dream is still being acted out as we speak right now. So, if you wanna know about end-time prophecy, grab hold of this dream. This dream has not been a hundred percent fulfilled, but this dream has been fulfilled about ninety percent of the way. We're waiting for the last ten percent, if you will. So, he says, "Hey, there is a king, there is a God in heaven. Your dream and the visions of your head upon your bed were these." Verse twenty-nine. The latter days there just means the messianic age, the day of Israel, the second coming, the Magog or Armageddon invasion. So, some of these things have happened, but a lot of them haven't. Verse twenty-nine. "As for you, O king, the thoughts came to your mind while on your bed about what would come to pass after this. And he who reveals secrets has made known to you what will be. But as for me, the secret has not been revealed to me, because I have more wisdom than anyone living. But for our sakes, who makes known the interpretation to the king, that you may know the thoughts of your heart." Here it is, verse thirty-one. "O king, you were watching, and behold, a great image. This great image, whose splendor was excellent, stood before you, and its form was awesome. This image's head was made of fine gold, his chest and arms of silver, his belly and thighs of bronze, its legs of iron, and its feet partly of iron and partly of clay. You watched, O king, while a stone was cut out without hands, which struck the image of its feet, on its feet of iron and clay, and broke them into pieces." Verse thirty-five. "Then the iron, the clay, the bronze, the silver, the gold were crushed together, and became like shaft from the summer threshing floors. The wind carried them away, so that no trace was found, and the stone that struck the image became a great mountain and filled the whole earth." This is the dream. Now, we will tell you the interpretation of it before you, O king. So, in these six verses, Daniel tells the king his dream. At this point in history, Nebuchadnezzar is fully focused on Daniel, because Daniel just did something that nobody else could do. He told him a dream that he had. Now, in that dream, he sees coming out of heaven a statue, head made of gold, silver, bronze, iron, iron and clay. He describes five different parts of this statue. Then he says, "There then came a stone out of heaven that was carved not by man, but by God, and it strikes the statue on its feet, and it dashes it to pieces, and then establishes a kingdom that will remain forever." That was the dream. Now, here's the interpretation. Now, the interpretation is important. Two things here. One, read these verses over and over. Know about the statue. Know about the dream. Then, study about the interpretation, because this is historical, present, and prophetic. So, we see the history in this dream, but we now can look in modern-day governmental structuring in the world before us, how it presently looks, but we will see it as it prophetically unfolds in the future. Verse thirty-seven. "You, O king, are the king of kings." Interesting statement. Hey, Nebuchadnezzar, dudes, you are the biggest, baddest king of the world. At the time, Nebuchadnezzar ruled the world from Babylon. One-world dictator. We talked about it. He's on the governmental mountain. He controls the economic mountain. He controls the education mountain. He controls the media mountain. He controls the entertainment mountain. He controls the family mountain. We will even see him control the religious mountain. This statement, this king, has the same MO as the Antichrist. So, when you look at King Nebuchadnezzar, what he does is what the Antichrist is gonna do. What he does is the same desire to rule the world. This is Satan in the flesh again, king of kings. "For the God of heaven has given you..." Okay, so he says, "Hey, you're a great king, but there's a God in heaven who has given you a kingdom, power, strength, and glory. And wherever the children of men dwell, or the beasts of the fields, the birds of the heaven, he's given them into your hand and made you ruler over them all. You are this head of gold." So, "Hey, king, you're not the bronze. You're not the silver. You are the head of gold." So, King Nebuchadnezzar is like, "Man, I like this Daniel guy all the more. He's not only telling me my dream, now he's making me out to be number one." Verse thirty-nine. "But hey, after you..." So, underline those words, "after you, another kingdom shall arise, inferior to yours." So, King Nebuchadnezzar goes, "Yeah, nobody can be as good as me." "Inferior to yours, then a third kingdom, made of bronze, which shall rule over all the earth." Now, this is foreshadowing Alexander the Great and the Greece, the government of Greece, if you will, the Greeks. Babylon is the city of gold. Babylon falls to the Medo-Persian Empire. Nebuchadnezzar will be taken out by the Persians. The Persians are taken out by Alexander the Great, or the Greeks, the Greece Empire. Uh, the Persians are taken out by Alexander the Great or the Greeks, the Greece Empire. Uh, verse forty, and the fourth kingdom, here here's here's here's, okay, so we got the first kingdom of gold. The second kingdom of silver, the third of bronze, verse forty, the fourth kingdom shall be as strong as iron. Inasmuch as iron breaks in pieces and shatters everything, and like iron that crushes. That kingdom will break in pieces and crush all others. Now, this is foreshadowing the first Roman Empire. Rome comes in and crushes its adversaries. He doesn't integrate them, they don't take over, they come in and crush people opposed to them. Uh, uh, Ru- Rome was known for their ruth ruthless uh domination of the world. So Daniel tells this king real fast, hey, king, your gold, the next guy is gonna be sober, he'll be less than you. The next guy will be uh bronze and he's gonna rule the whole, he'll touch the whole world. But then this iron kingdom's coming in and they're gonna dominate or crush all opposition. So we see these four kingdoms, verse forty-one. Now, this fourth kingdom though is going to be in two divisions. So we can look back at these four kingdoms in history and say they've already existed. We've seen them birthed, rise and fall. Uh, we've seen all of that of the Babylonian Empire, the Persian Empire, the Gre- uh Greeks, uh Rome. But now today, we're like, well, where's this fifth empire, this next empire? So here here it is, and I got a map on the next page, we'll look at in just a minute. Verse forty-one, whereas you saw the feet and the toes, partly of potter's clay. And partly of iron, the kingdom shall be divided, yet the strength of the iron shall be in it. Just as you saw the iron mixed with ceramic clay. So let's stop there, I'll put a I'll put a note to come back there. Turn the page uh to your notes of of our statue that uh you could find hundreds of examples of these online. And most of them are pretty good. Uh, this one, I just liked because it 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 it's good for tonight. We'll see this this empires uh likened, we'll see this expanded on as we get into chapter seven of Daniel. But this would be just a uh an idea of what the statue would look like. So we see at the top, uh, the Babylonian Empire, uh, and the dates that it ruled and reigned. Later on in Daniel, we we see that this is recognized as the lion. So you could write the word lion next to the head. The next empire after uh King Nebuchadnezzar, after this Babylonian Empire. Is the silver empire of the Medo Persian, uh likened as the bear. Uh, we'll we'll get to that later. Uh, then the next one is the uh um uh. Uh, Grecian Empire, uh, Alexander the Great, the leopard. Uh, then we see the Roman Empire and likened to the dragon. Um, then down at the bottom, you'll see iron and clay. So down here at the bottom, these first four, we can look back and see their existence. But this one here, we're searching for it, this last one. And we see that the kingdom is now the footing for it, the feet, we see two feet, one foot is made of iron. And one one is made of clay. But the two mix and make a deal to become a kingdom. So we're going to see a prophetic kingdom arise. That's going to have two forces that come together to rule the world. But the problem is, these forces won't be able to mix fully. They'll have an agreement, but they won't really see eye to eye. They won't be equally yoked. One's iron, one is clay. Those two don't mix. Uh, in metallurgy, you can't put iron and clay together and make necklaces or jewelry. Or 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 structured beams for a building or whatever. The two are come together, but they won't fully mix. So we're gonna zero in on that because prophetically, we need to be able to see this empire arising in our day and age right now. So let's go back to verse forty-one and we'll read through it one more time. Whereas you saw the feet and the toes. Partly of potter's clay and partly of iron. The kingdom shall be divided, yet the strength of the iron shall be in it, just as you saw iron mixed with ceramic clay. Um, in scripture, clay is likened to people. So there's several references uh that that uh Missler puts out there. That that show us that the word clay is like people. The most famous would be when Jeremiah goes to the potter's house. And the potter, God basically says, hey, you are the clay, I am the potter. Look, you're uh, I made I made Adam out of the clay of the ground, the dust of the ground. You're the clay, I form you, I shape you, I mold you, I push on you, I make you into what I want you to be. Don't get off the potter's wheel. So we know that it's very obvious that clay is likened to people. Iron, though, is likened to things or empires or nations. Iron is something very different. Now, the first Roman uh uh empire was likened to that of iron. So we see on the statue all these legs of iron. But the second Roman Empire that we're looking at today. The second Roman Empire is going to be mixed iron and clay. Now, there's a lot of uh of room here that we could we could talk about for a long time. But one of the the, you know, so there's a couple of different ideas. But one, we are looking for the Antichrist to rule out of what some people would call the Second Babylon. The Second Tower of Babel, the Second Roman Empire. We're gonna see this mixing of of two agendas, two empires that come together. Now, we see this in early Christianity. We see this around four hundred uh um A.D. We, you know, about sixteen hundred years ago, we saw that Roman Catholicism starts to move in. And mix with Rome. So we see religion mixing with governmental or political power. So then we see the fall of the the Roman Empire, that it can't really succeed on its own. And we see the fall of a man-made religious system that can't really succeed on its own. So we kinda see the two merged together. And that's where we have this abusive power of the past. That we would say had roots in Roman Catholicism. Now, I'm not blatantly throwing Roman uh or Catholics under the bus, I'm not doing any of that. But I am saying, we saw an abuse of power. We saw this mixing, that that the government had one agenda, the religious empire had another. They came together when it was convenient, but the truth truly didn't mix. The true, the two had their own issues with each other. But yet you would see how the Roman Catholicism, the the Catholic Church. Would try to rule the kings and the queens uh on up to to King James, when we get our Bible. And King James is like, no, I don't think that just the common man should should. Uh, just have a Bible in Latin that they can't understand and and just the pope or just the priest should interpret. I think that the the common English man should and woman should have the scripture in their own language. So we saw that that the king's power overruled the church's power for the better. But we see many examples of the opposite, where the agenda of a corrupt church. Was mixing with a corrupt political system or government to therefore rule the people. So we've seen this merging of these two iron and clay before. The problem is, they don't really mix and stick together. They both have an agenda. One is for political power, they tolerate the religious power. One is for religious power that 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 placate the the political power. We will see this, this is the harlot that rides the beast. The harlot will be a religious system that that placates the governmental system. And rides on the success of it, but but has has its own power. We'll see these two systems don't mix. We're going to see uh prophetically where. Uh, Israel will make a deal with the worldwide government of the Antichrist, clay and iron, and the two won't mix. They'll say that they'll give them spiritual tolerance, where the Jews can worship their own God and have sacrifice. But the Antichrist, this beast system, the iron over here, won't truly mix with the clay. Uh, or the people. Um, so I put in your notes there communism and democracy. This is the one that I think we need to look at the most for right now, December twenty twenty. In communism, in Russia, um, we have had names like the Iron Curtain. The Iron Fist of Russia. Uh, Russia and communism are 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 parallel, they're the they're synonymous. When you say Russia, you think communism. When you think communism, you predominantly think Russia. Well, Russia rules its people with an iron fist, the sickle, uh, and iron curtain. You're you know, you know, what we do, here's our divide and and they're known to be ruthless and they're known for their dominance. Um, this was Vietnam, you know, uh, this was uh funding of different wars and and trying to take communism around the world. Well, communism in and of itself is not individualistic. It is uh a nationalistic, it's a it's a it's a government system. So it's considered iron, it's not personal. Um, it is just the entity of communism. Democracy in America is the people rule the government, it's the people's government. People have a choice, people have a voice, people have freedoms. So when we look at America or democracy, it's like clay, it represents people. When you look at communism, it's like iron. What we are seeing today in twenty twenty is what we would call socialism. Communism in and of itself is an atheistic um governmental system. Socialism is i- and this is maybe just Cameron's version, but socialism is. Hey, you can worship God, but but as long as we approve of the way you worship and what God you worship. So as long as you uh are in Communist China and you uh have the uh uh Republic of of. Of um, uh, the ru- the uh communist version of the Bible. And you've submitted your sermons to the Communist Government and they've scoured through it and and you're not saying anything that we don't like. Then you can have your little religious service. That's kind of like a socialism or a socialistic version of communism. What we're seeing today in America is socialism. Which is is basically uh a a um uh um hidden communism. Trying to come in and mix with our democracy. So we're trying, we're seeing these 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 two forces that are trying to come together. And so we'll see it in our politicians where, you know, everybody needs to be paid the same, every equal wage for all. Everybody needs same access to to this benefit and this uh this service. And everybody, nobody should have uh debt more, you know, for going to higher education and nobody should. And you know what, uh, your trademark and your patent for your business idea, it's not really right for it to be just yours. We're gonna go ahead and strip that that uh uh trademark and patent of its power. And we're gonna make it more the government, everybody, it's okay if if they steal and rip off your idea. That's the robbing of clay or individualism and democracy. And it's the merging of these two very opposing forces. Well, this is what will be the government of the Antichrist. This will be the governmental uh um merging of iron and clay. So as we see the the advancement of this hybrid government. Worldwide, um, just know that that is the platform on which the Antichrist will rule the world. And the Antichrist will come in and look like the good guy. He will sound or or a good lady, he'll that that person. Will come in and everybody will say, oh, they're so fair. They're so generous, they're so e- equality for everybody. And it will be disguised in in this iron and clay mixing. So when we get to the feet of this idol, of this statue, God is saying, hey, in the end times, the latter days. You'll see the merging of iron and clay. You'll see it. The problem is, the two won't bond. They'll be married for a short time, but the arguments will be immediate. They'll be under the service, uh, you know, behind the scenes, but it will just be a matter of time till it disintegrates. That will like be the same thing that happened with with the Antichrist agreement with Israel. Verse forty-two. And as the toes of the feet were partly of iron and partly of clay. So the kingdom shall be partly strong and partly fragile. What kingdom? The kingdom of end times, the kingdom that's being built right now. U.N. agreements. Um, a a political force that is partly strong but partly fragile. Could that be the blending and the 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 opposition that we see in America? That that as we are divided, we are becoming fragile. We're unit, you know, we're not unified. Verse forty-three. Um, a- and so some of y'all are gonna think I'm making this up, but some of y'all are gonna laugh because I'm back on my topic of the Nephilim. But but here's a reference in Daniel to end-time giants, end-time Nephilim. Verse forty-three, as you saw iron mixed with ceramic clay. Okay, as you saw the iron and the clay, this this um, this system mixed with people. This Antichrist system mixed with people, you'll see uh iron and clay. As you saw that, look at what it says, I highlighted it for you, they will mingle with the seed of men. Well, what what who's they and what's mingle? Ming- they will mingle with the seed of men. Talking about uh um uh reproduction, talking about offspring. They will mingle with the seed of men, but they will not adhere to one another, just as iron does not mix with clay. Um, so flip flip past the the uh, we'll we'll get to it. And just flip to the to the last, um, the the second, the third to the last page. Flip to the page that says Daniel's and his, Daniel and his friends promoted. It's past the image of the of the of the statue, the next page. Down at the bottom, let's just talk about this real briefly, cuz I'm not gonna go back over all the Nephilim, but I want us to capture this. They will mingle with the seed of men. Satan is out to corrupt and to integrate with us. Satan's angels and Satan's demons are alive on the earth. A demon inhabits a person to get it to do its will. An angel is its own deity that can take the form of a person. So a fallen angel can look like a person or look like something. Um, angels all through the Bible, good angels, holy godly angels that come to do God's work. Many times we're mistaken as men, many times they were worshipped. Well, if holy angels can be mistaken as men and worshipped, every time those holy angels say, don't worship me, worship God. A fallen angel can be mistaken as a man or a woman. And when we worship them, they're not gonna deflect that, they're gonna say, bring it on, baby, worship me, listen to me, listen to my ideology. You know what? We can mix iron and clay. Don't worry about it being equally yoked, don't worry about truth and deception. We know what? We could have a tree of knowledge of good and evil. You don't just add, don't, you don't just have to add that tree of God's truth, let's mix it with knowledge of good and evil. See, that that will be the end-time deception. Here we go. Tampering with the human genome, this is at the end and we'll come back to the rest of the verses. Genesis, chapter six, Matthew twenty-four thirty-seven, Jesus says. But as the days of Noah sho- so shall be the coming of the son of man. Genesis six, it says, as it came to pass, when men began to multiply on the face of the earth, daughters were born unto them. The sons of God saw the daughters of men that they were fair, and they took them wives of all that they chose. The sons of God are the Ben Elohim, these are the angels. Angels are the sons of God. The sons of man are Adam's offspring, sons of man. The sons of God are the Ben Elohim, these are the angels of God. Some angels are holy, some are fallen. Lucifer is a fallen angel, Lucifer has other angels that fell with him. Uh, we see this in the Old Testament book of Job, the New Testament book of Luke, the book of Enoch, which would be an uh outside the Bible book. Not that we, it's not the inherent word of God, but it is for historical reference. The Septuagint, uh, the lexicon, Adam equals daughters of Adam. Uh, daughters of Adam were not just Cain's children, Adam had daughters also, that's where Cain got his wife. Uh, took all of who they chose, doesn't sound like the girls had much choice in the matter. These fallen angels are sleeping with human women to create this. This breed of creation called the giants, the Nephilim. Um, verse three, the Lord said, my spirit will not strive with men. Uh, always for hi- he is flesh, yet his days will be numbered a hundred and twenty. There were giants in those days, verse four of Genesis six. And also after that, when the sons of God came into the daughters of men and they bore children to them. The same became mighty men which were of old, men of renown, the Nephilim. In your notes, the Nephilim means the fallen ones. The fall means to fall, to be cast away, or to fall, the fall away or desert. The Ha'gibareem are the mighty ones. Uh, the, in the Septuagint, in the Greek, uh, in the Greek translation of the Old Testament, the word is Gigante. Where we get the word giant, uh, uh, where we get, uh, which means earthborn. Uh, where we have the word Gaia, uh, representing earth. Gigante, giant means earthborn. The Gigantes are the offspring of the Nephilim, these are the same. Uh, the, the giants of the Nephilim are the offspring of angels integrating with women, seed mingling. But the two don't mix, they're iron and clay, they, they don't, they don't last. So when we look at giants in the Old Testament, we know that this is a breed. Of creation, a breed of people or beings that are the mixture of fallen angels and human women. That's why God would say things like, kill them all, annihilate them all. Um, uh, the Greek word for giants is Titans. Uh, all through, uh, in, in the last one, here, here's where I really wanted to get tonight, cause we haven't talked about this. Uh, look at that last point, uh, Genia means breed or kind. The English word genes and genetics come from the same root. So in twenty twenty, we talked about, well, it's in your genes, it's in their genes or genetically. Or we're talking about genetically engineered, uh, food or genetically engineering. Um, uh, 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 the body, that genetically we can go in and pick eye color and sex of. Of the baby and height and we could, we could give your child, uh, you know, the ability to run faster and build more muscle. Your child could be, if we could tamper with the genetics, the DNA, if we could get in there and mingle with that. Then we'll create something that will be far superior than that which is normal. This is the end time mingling of the seed. So when we talk about Nephilim and giants and the end of the age, we're talking about. This perversion of the human genome or genetics as we know it. Now, we will all make these arguments, well, the more we learn about genetics. We're curing diabetes, we're curing these diseases and stopping these things. I'm not talking about, um, true medical, uh, genetics. I am talking about what the enemy is trying to do with the human population. Uh, Genesis six nine, there, these were the generations of Noah. Noah was just a man and perfect in his generations. That meant without blemish, sound helpful, helpful, without spot, unimpaired. Satan has come in and tried to mess with man's genetics. Mess with men's seed to corrupt the offspring, to corrupt mankind. Satan has been doing this since before the flood and is still doing it in twenty twenty. He's just put different lipstick on the same pig, he's just put a new mask on the same tactic. The Bible says, nothing new is under the sun. So when we're in Genesis, when, when we're in Daniel chapter two, verse forty-three, and it says, they mingle with the seed of men. These are the fallen angels that Jude speaks of, Second Peter. The, the, that, that, that all of the founding fathers of the faith agreed on. The problem is in our, in our, in our higher learning, uh, seminaries of today. This sounds science fiction, this sounds, uh, way out there, this is biblical. And until we recognize it, we won't recognize the end time deception that the enemy's trying to come in and tamper. With our basics of our genetics and DNA. Satan is out to pervert mankind. He is out to pervert mankind, I put all that in here, you've heard me talk about it a lot. I'm not gonna, I won't go through it all tonight. If you wanna catch some of our talks about, uh, angels and, and that, uh, please, please look back. But, please know this, that in Daniel chapter two forty-three, when it says the mingling of seed. That's what it's talking about, we're gonna see a lot of spiritual warfare. So let's go back in our notes, Daniel chapter two, we'll pick up in verse forty-four. It's on the page right after your statue page. Um, I do have a question right here, so let me answer this question as we kinda, um. Uh, let me see if I can understand this. Oh, uh, a, a viewer, um, met a person in a Christian bookstore. That told her about the book of Maccabees and how it relates to the book of Daniel. Uh, so they brought out the Apocrypha, uh, and which has the book of Noah, what are your thoughts? Or Enoch, oh, Enoch. Um, the, the Apocrypha, uh, you'll find that in a lot of old Catholic Bibles. Um, the Apocrypha, uh, were books that were written that have historical information. But they are not considered inerrant word, the inerrant word of God. Um, they may have some information, I've not read the book of Maccabees, I can't speak to that. Uh, it may have some historical reference and information to Daniel. But when we read those books, we just need to understand that they are historical documentation. That the Jewish rabbis and, and synagogue leaders, the Sadducees, Pharisees, scribes. They would have been very aware of those books and the information in them, but they did not consider them the word of God. Just, just for that, so I hope I answered that, that question. Um, let's go to verse forty-four, Daniel chapter two, verse forty-four. And here is talking about end time governments. And in the days, uh, and in these days of these kings, the God of heaven will set up a kingdom which will never be destroyed. In the days of what kings? In the days of all of these kings, God has been setting up his kingdom. In the days of Babylon, Babylonian history, the, the, the Persian Empire, the Greek Empire, the Roman Empire. The days of Jesus, even today, God is setting up his kingdom. Gods, I don't, I don't know that God's just gonna bring his kingdom now, he's setting up now, that's what his disciples didn't understand. When Jesus says, the kingdom of God is near, it's here, you just gotta see my kingdom. And in these days, the kingdom, the king, in the days of these kings, the God of heaven will set up a kingdom which will never be destroyed. Now that statement is by far also talking very heavily about the last kingdom on earth. The last kingdom of iron and clay, the Antichrist kingdom. And the kingdom shall not be left to other people. It shall break in pieces and consume all these kingdoms and it shall stand forever. O King, King Nebuchadnezzar, Daniel's talking here, verse forty-five. Inasmuch as you saw that the stone cut out of the mountain without hands. And that it broke in pieces, iron, bronze, clay, silver and gold. The great God has made known to the king what will come past after this. This dream is certain and its interpretation is sure. Daniel said, hey, listen. God, this rock that's not made by man is coming, being carved out of this mountain, will destroy these kingdoms. This is a dream that you can count on and know that the interpretation I've given you is accurate. Verse forty-six, Nebuchadnezzar's response. King Nebuchadnezzar falls on his face, prostrate before Daniel and commands that they should present an offering and incense to him. The king answers Daniel. And says, truly, your God is the God of gods and the Lord of kings and the revealer of secrets, since you could reveal this secret. Then the king promoted Daniel and gave him many gifts and made him ru- ruler over the whole province of Babylon. The chief administrator over all the wise men of Babylon. So Daniel is now over all the soothsayers, magicians, astrologers, necromancers. He's over all these occultic, uh, uh, practi- you know, all these occultic, uh, um, pagan, uh, worshippers. And Daniel petitions the king, he said, and, and Daniel said Shadrach, Meshach and Abednego. Over the province or the affairs of the Babylonian empire, and now Daniel sits at the gate of the king. So we see Daniel exalted in this pagan empire and his three best friends exalted. Daniel is now over the wise men, he is now over the influence of Babylon. This gives us great insight into the end times. God is going to promote into positions of power, men and women in what we would call pagan empires. Or Babylonian empires or Antichrist governmental systems. When we talk about the mountains, God's called some of you to political positions. And you go, you know, I'm going into the lion's den, I'm going into hell's flames itself. And God says, yeah, you are, I made you for that, I need you to go be best friends with the Antichrist, I need you to go. Be second in command of that division, I need you to go rule over this province, this empire, yes, I know they're all worshiping somebody else. Yes, I know at work it's full of gossip and backbiting and, and slander and perversion, but I placed you there like I placed Daniel. In the heart of it, this idea that the church needs to get out of Hollywood, get out of politics. Get out of the government, that's a lie from the enemy, God actually says the opposite and does the opposite. And puts them into these positions of power. So God has called you to do something great in your calling to climb the mountain. When we look at the second chapter of Daniel, we realize that this interpretation of dreams is still alive. So I wanna talk about dreams for just a minute. There is, um, arguments against the supernatural gifts of God. All through the Bible, God speaks to people through dreams and visions. So if you turn to Acts chapter two, and let's turn there now, it's not in your notes, Acts chapter two, verse seventeen. Uh, Paul or Peter is talking to the first church. Jesus has just descended, anti, uh, uh, Passover, uh, the, um, uh. The Holy Ghost has just been given to the church, they're speaking in tongues. They're, they are, are doing miracles, they're preaching, they're doing all sorts of things, Acts chapter two, verse seventeen. Peter stands up before the Jews and he says, it shall come to pass in the last days. I will pour out my spirit on your sons and your daughters, they will prophesy. Your young men will see visions and your old men will dream dreams. Now there is a contingency that wants us to believe that these do not exist anymore. There is a contingency in the church that says, oh, God doesn't speak in tongues anymore, God doesn't heal anymore. God doesn't do the supernatural anymore, God sure doesn't give you dreams and sure doesn't give you visions. That's not true, that's not biblical, you can't prove it. In fact, the Bible proves the opposite. To the new church of Acts, God says, in the last days, I will give you visions. I will give you dreams, some of you, God has given the supernatural gift of dreams. I think I have had one dream in my life that I would claim to be supernatural. And I remember it, and I, uh, actually I have, I have, uh, two. And I remember them and I took them both to the pastor that I was serving under and two of them were a warning and it was for him. And it wasn't against him, it was, it was a foreshadowing of what people were doing behind his back, it was, it was telling him what was going on in the church. God gives you dreams. God very well may speak to you in dreams. Don't ignore them, don't chalk them up as, oh, that's just my imagination. So, most, a lot of your dreams are just your imagination, a lot of them are just crazy, but. Some of you would, would say that your dreams come from hell, some of you would say, well, the devil's giving me nightmares. Some of us put more credit in the right category for the enemy than we do for God. If Satan can give you nightmares, why can't God give you visions of holiness? Why can't he give you dreams? Now, vision is, is when we see something. And you may be talking to somebody and God shows you, uh, a picture of, of, I'm just making this up. God shows you a picture above their head of, of a dead tree. And God's saying to you, hey, listen, they're dead on the inside. There, the, God may give you a vision of, of, of a waterfall. Over somebody and God says, man, they're full of life, they're abundant, they're thriving. God may give you a vision that is very different than being a visionary. Dreaming isn't, oh, she's a dreamer, he's a dreamer, these are visions and dreams that come from God. So when you read the book of Daniel, God doesn't change, he's the same yesterday, he's the same today, he's the same tomorrow. God may very well choose to give you a dream. So that you can know something. Or God's warning you of something, or God's telling you something. So whatever that is. I want you to not chalk up that, oh, just Daniel in the Old Testament got dreams. Or just somebody in the New Testament got a vision, God doesn't do that anymore. I truly believe God does that, I wanna share a dream that I had, cause it's on my heart and I, and I feel like I should share it, I was, I was in it, I was on church staff. Uh, many years ago and I had a vision of, of people throwing things at the preacher while he was preaching. Uh, and the preacher went and ducked behind the organ and people are throwing things at him. And I had another dream, like a night or two later, of all these candles in our church sanctuary. And they one by one were being put out, they were being put out. So I remember when I shared this with the pastor, I was like, hey, listen, God is warning us that people are attacking you. God, they're, they're trying to put out the fire, they're trying to put out your light of the gospel, they, they want you not to preach the truth. They'll cheer for you and throw money in the plate when you tell them what they wanna hear. But when you tell them the truth, they're gonna throw things at you and they're gonna wanna kill you with their words. And then they're gonna try to put out the light in the church. I remember that now, and I'd forgotten all about that, but I remember that and God very clearly was giving me the interpretation. Um, now what we did with it may be very different, but God was telling me something for somebody else. So I want you to know that God does speak supernaturally to you. I want you to know that Satan is out to mingle iron and clay. Satan wants you to mix truth with lie, he wants you to mix things that don't go together, the Bible says, don't be unequally yoked. Don't go into business with somebody that's not a believer. If you love Jesus, don't go into a business deal with it, with somebody that doesn't. Iron and clay don't mix, it'll be good for a little bit, but it'll fall apart. Don't get into a relationship with somebody that doesn't love the Lord and you think you're gonna save them through your dating relationship. Don't, don't co-mingle that, don't take the word of God and mix it with the word of man and come up with your own religion, it'll fall apart. That's what Daniel's teaching us, thank you so much for your time tonight, uh, do we have any other questions?
Nothing I see.
Okay, if you got questions for me, email them, I'll try to get back to you, uh, as soon as possible, God bless you, we'll see you next week, six thirty, thank you.